Ladies and gentlemen, normally we don't come forward in workshops obviously to present regulations. HR has been working on trying to tighten up some of these regulations, clarify, clean them up. Some of them have not been touched for years and years and years. The purpose of, when we presented to senior staff, you know, we talked about what should our next steps be to make sure we go about this doing the right way. So ultimately, what I'm gonna present tonight, I'm gonna kinda walk you through it. Normally I'll say hold questions to the end, but we're not gonna do that. At this point after just about every slide, I'm gonna ask you if you have any questions or thoughts. We're here to clarify for you as we roll out these regulations, so if chance you may have a question or get asked a question, so we wanna make sure that you actually understand. There's some gives and there's some takes and there's some balancing pieces. So please keep that in mind throughout this whole presentation. There are definitely some areas that I'm sure you may get asked, and it's pretty complicated. So with that, and I appreciate Dr. Spence helping us do this afterwards rather than trying to rush through it before, before the meeting because I was concerned we wouldn't have enough time to do it the right way for you. So what we're gonna start with here is, this is ultimately the agenda, the table of contents, whatever you wanna call it. We are gonna talk about a new regulation, and we don't have a number yet. I guess Kami's gonna have to help us identify that number. It's gonna be a regulation that explains the Virginia Local Disability Program, V L B P, for hybrid employees, hybrid employees. That's ultimately what we're required to do, I'm gonna be talking to you more about that. Through all the regulations that we've been going through, the leave regulations, we're really revising fifteen, but we're only talking about ten tonight because those other five are just cosmetic or some cleanup of language. It's not systemic changes. And we're also recommending deleting three, but ultimately, the three that we're actually talking about deleting are actually all included in other rounds, including parental leave. We're not stopping parental leave, we're, we already cover it in another way. We are making some changes to it though. So I'm gonna walk you through each one of these. So hopefully you don't have any questions about the agenda, but. So here's the new regulation. And, you know, you may remember the V R S changed their plan a couple times over the last several years. All us old timers are Plan One, really it was V R S for all of us back then, but when they came out with Plan Two, they called the original plan Plan One. Plan One and Plan Two aren't that different, but they are not getting the same benefits as the hybrid employees. Hybrid employees are anybody that is a new member of V R S on or after January first, 2014. Alright, so that's several years ago that it started. Keep in mind that since they came up with this, when they rolled it out, they were building this plan as it was coming. So we were learning, you know, different rules and different, and it kinda got tweaked back and forth. So we're at a point now where we believe we need to modify some of our leave regulations to help balance things out fairly across the board, and I said I'll walk you through that. Ultimately, they have different rules as I said that apply to them. The big piece that we're gonna talk about right here is that these hybrid employees are eligible for non-work related disability benefits when they have, after they have one year of continuous improved, uh, continuous improvement. My old principle is coming up here, continuous service. So remember, the first year, they're not eligible. After the one-year waiting period has been met, there's an income replacement, normally begins on the eighth calendar day, not the eighth workday, the eighth calendar day of absence. And it has to be authorized by REIT group, the Virginia Local Disability Plan, third-party administrator for the state of Virginia. Not us, but ultimately, even prior to that, if somebody is gonna be out, they had to provide us medical documentation. So now, they provide it to the REIT group. Okay, I mean, that's already happening.
Is that a state law?
It's required by V R S.
Okay.
Okay, for them to get access to the short-term disability coverage. Now, hybrid employees, again, everyone hired, new to V R S, January one, oh fourteen. And I'm sorry for being repetitive, but it's important for you to remember this. They get short-term disability coverage and provides them with a maximum of one hundred and twenty-five days. That is on the backs of the school division, and it's an unfunded mandate. Now, Farrell knows, we've been tracking it for the last couple of years, but as new employees come in, all employees become short, oh, sure. See, it's too late for me. Hybrid employees, uh, it's gonna become more and more of an unfunded mandate, and I'll show you why. Uh, so this new regulation, we are talking about, we're gonna have that roll out January. That's pretty much identifying and clarifying what we're already doing or required to do. Any questions on that? Yes, ma'am?
So I think you just answered it, so this is not any change here for these, this class of employees?
Not, not really.
It's not a change, it's just putting into regulation.
It's become clear what we have to do, we've been following the law, and this is, yeah.
Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Edwards, sorry.
This may be a Kami question. The source for this is the General Assembly or?
Yes, when they changed the V R S benefits, this is where, what they got.
And they decided, the General Assembly decided they wanted this stuff?
Short-term disability was included.
Yep.
Okay, so what do you see now?
Locally paid.
Well, that's why they wanted it.
Keep in mind what I'm about to show you here now. Okay, so now I'm showing you the chart. These are, remember, the hybrid employees, not Plan One, not Plan Two. The majority of our folks are Plan One or Plan Two. So these folks, the first year, remember, they don't get any access to short-term disability, zero. And this is the logic we're using for some of the changes we're making, so it's important for me to point this out to you. Years two through five after the first year, nothing at a hundred percent, nothing at eighty percent, but they get a hundred and twenty-five days, again, with medical documentation, at sixty percent of their salary without touching their leave. Okay, that's important for you to know, 'cause later, we're gonna change some things for them. Okay, and you're gonna get asked, how come they don't get this and that? The Plan One and Plan Two people are using their own sick leave.
There is, it's really important to understand that the hybrid employees have this, non-hybrid employees have no short-term disability option.
Correct, correct.
Their option is using leave and like leave banks and we're gonna get to that.
Exactly, and so, so when you get down here to years five through ten, now they get twenty-five days at a hundred percent, unfunded, but we have to pick it up, and we don't take leave. Eighty percent, the next twenty-five, again, it all adds up to one twenty-five, so you get the idea. And then the last seventy-five at sixty percent. If they go beyond that, then the V R S picks up and they could go to long-term disability, but we don't pay that. That would be up to maybe to retirement, depending on their medical condition. Ask.
Is there an order, like do you do the sixty, or is this?
Well, it's based on their years.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Yes, it's in this order.
So they get a twenty-five days and a hundred percent.
The first twenty-five, yes, and then when you get here fifteen or more years, you get twenty-five and a hundred percent.
So your first twenty-five days, you get a hundred percent.
Correct.
That's what I make sure I understood.
And that's, again, I wanna keep pointing out, 'cause later, when I, we tell you we're not gonna let them have certain things, but they gotta rich.
You're talking about short-term disability. Is that what, I mean, we're not talking about just having a cold and being out for a year.
No, no, yes, correct.
Six months to.
Going out on, uh, what?
Do you have surgery?
An operation or a baby or?
Months of surgery.
Oh, so pregnancy falls into this too?
Yes.
Oh.
Really?
So what would keep someone from quitting and being out for a year and being retired?
Okay, what would keep someone from quitting?
Well, if they quit, they lose this.
No, if they.
No, if, if someone who's been an employee for twenty years.
No, if you were a, if you were a Level One or Level Two.
You remain a Level One.
Remember, I said new to V R S.
Right, after two thousand and fourteen.
So if somebody's out twenty years, but they worked for fifteen years ago, that's pretty small.
Right, or someone who takes a long, but it's a returning loan for ten years.
Yeah, but if they're Plan One, you stay in Plan One or Plan Two.
Okay.
Already trying to figure out how it works, huh? Okay, so you get this piece.
Yep.
Right.
Alright. It's gonna get more complicated, so that's why I'm trying to, alright, here's what we're talking about doing based on all that. Employees in the V R S hybrid plan may accumulate up to ninety days of sick leave. Our current Plan One and Plan Two people, non-hybrid employees can, have no limit, that's what it currently is. Their sick leave is their short-term disability. You get that?
Yep.
Now, ninety days is required by the code. So we can't say we're not gonna, we're only gonna let them hold fifteen days. Now, what we, we did some research and of all the employees that have ninety days on the books, the average time was twenty-one and a half years to get to ninety days. They get, and how do you accumulate sick leave is you get, if I'm a ten-month employee, I get a day a month. If I'm twelve months, I get a day, month, twelve a year, ten. So twenty-one years to get to ninety, it shouldn't be a huge problem, and again, some of this stuff, these are regulations. As we go through some of this, we might see a bump, then we'll get with Dr. Spence and we'll tweak it if we need to. But right now, this is what we're, we're gonna be doing.
Gentlemen, for V R S purposes and ED me if he answers this, you could turn in sick leave, correct, and earn V R S credit?
Uh, I'm gonna turn that one over to Farrell, but I don't think you could just turn sick leave over or convert. Edie, did you pick anything up from, from benefits on that or?
They haven't answered that yet.
You gotta hold that button down.
I mean, we, our employees can turn it in when we retire, I mean, when our.
Wait, wait, what's the question?
That's different.
V R S gives credit for certain types of leave that you can buy in, and so I think that maybe is.
Uh, I think we better be careful with that, we're researching that, but I don't, I think, I don't wanna say what I think it is. We're actually, Farrell, if you could help us and Edie between you two guys find out from benefits what V R S is willing to do. It's not day for day, and it might be about buying back, so I, that's another topic for us to look into. So, okay, that's that piece. The other change is it's clarifying when you could use sick leave. I know that sounds silly, but some of the experiences we've had in H R is people think that's vacation and, you know, trying to keep people at work, in the classrooms, et cetera. So we're just reemphasizing the appropriate use of sick leave is ultimately when you're sick or parents or someone else. And bereavement leave, which, okay. Yep, and now another change we're gonna be doing here, and this is, this doesn't come up a lot, but it does come up where someone's out for long-term, we're gonna stop front-loading the sick leave at the beginning of the year if the person was out like, you know, the whole previous year or the last six months, and they're not coming back, we don't know when they're coming back, we're gonna prorate it when they come back. Folks aren't gonna be earning leave for not working or not being there. I, I need you to, you get it? Otherwise, someone, and it doesn't, we're just trying to slow some of the loopholes to be honest with you. Someone can be out and they're earning personal reasons, and later we're gonna talk about annual the same way. Uh, they're not coming back or they're out for an extended time, and they're earning leave as a benefit that they're not, here. You get that?
Yeah, if you're on leave, you should come leave.
Well, for, you know, after twelve consecutive weeks, it's not like we're gonna nickel and dime. And ultimately that goes along with the Family Medical Leave Act, et cetera, so. So everybody understand that piece? Yes, sir?
I, long-term, I'm worried about the ninety day and the non-continuous accumulation, 'cause it's certainly gonna invite people to, to potentially use slash not waste sick leave where in the past they've been able to continue to accumulate. Now, now they've got a ceiling, they're gonna say, well, okay, I can't.
So, and Mr. Edwards, here's, here's why I mentioned when we did the research. What you're worried about, we worry about too, but the average person, it takes them twenty-one years to get there.
Okay, no, I, that's why I said long-term, long-term, not my fault.
And really, yeah, well. But like I said, we may have to tweak some of this, or someone will have to tweak this later on.
Not you and Dan.
And probably neither one of us. Because it takes a long time to get ninety days, even if you save, you never use any sick leave, it takes nine years if you're a ten-month employee. Okay?
Uh huh, got it.
Alright, and, and again, January one, and that's why Eileen was asked to stay, begged to stay, 'cause we have a lot of communicating to do, we wanna make sure we do it the right way. Okay, uh, we're talking about revising four or forty-five point three, terminal pay for unused sick leave. And I think we mentioned it at the workshop or some presentation we did, and there are a couple gasps in the audience in the school board. We have some statistics we're gonna share with you here.
Good.
Twenty-eight bucks a day, twenty-eight dollars a day for all employees. Uh, this rate has not changed in at least twenty years.
But didn't we go and do that when we had some stimulus honey? We did try to get people to retire early and we gave them.
Oh, there was, yeah, there was, years ago, but it wasn't for sick leave.
Yeah, I remember, that's early retirement.
Yeah, it wasn't sick leave.
And there was early retirement incentive program, but we're a little worried about doing something like that.
But it was, but we did pay them more during that time.
No, not for early, not for sick leave.
After the sick leave.
Okay, I thought we did, we talked about it recently.
No, no, no.
They offered an incentive, a cash incentive, get the entire retirement last day.
Yeah, some of, yeah, trying to explain it now will be another joint, but I think they got about, if they worked,
Anyway, sorry.
if they worked, they got twenty percent of their salary over five years.
Right, I think something like that, yeah.
That's about what he said.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
Now, you're alright.
Well, thank you.
This is a statement, but I'm gonna back it up with some data shortly. On average, retired employees utilize an increasing amount of leave prior to retirement.
Yeah, we're researching, there's a reason, twenty-eight dollars a day.
And I'm not gonna be touching that, I'm just gonna show you data. While on leave, okay, here's something you gotta keep in mind. Our goal is to try to keep productivity in the, in the buildings, in the classrooms, in the, in the finance office up there especially. So when people are out and they're burning up their sick leave for whatever reason, they're getting their regular pay, you know that, they're getting their daily rate of pay, whatever that may be. And we also, for the majority of physicians, have to pay about a hundred dollars a day for a substitute. So we're paying daily rate, and we're paying for a substitute, and we're losing that productivity in the classroom, in the building. So, whoa, wait, wait, was that next? Yeah, it is, okay. Alright, so here's what we did. We looked at three years ago, these folks that retired three years ago, fourteen, fifteen. How many were there eating off the coffee, you remember? I know you were there.
Four hundred, four hundred and fifteen.
Alright, four hundred and fifteen people in fourteen, fifteen, their last five years, these are the same people for five years. What you noticed is there's a ninety-four percent increase in five years. Alright, so, okay, ninety-four percent increase in the last five years. And you notice here, the year, last two years actually, you got a huge spike. Alright, well, maybe that's an anomaly, right?
No, that's not.
Don't take my thunder.
Yeah, who knows what's coming.
So then we, so then we look back two years ago, and these folks, we went back five years. There's a ninety, again, almost ninety-four, ninety-three point six percent increase in the last five years. And these folks, two years ago, started utilizing more sick leave for whatever reason, one, two, three, straight up. All those days, now, I'm not making a judgment, I'm just saying that's full pay and, and substitute for most of those positions. So last year, we did last year too, in the purple.
Oh, it dropped.
Not, not really, I mean, you, you went from here up.
You started earlier.
It started with a seventy percent increase.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
And it started earlier.
Okay, I forgot about your number, I'm like, this last, good.
So last year, folks that, whether they knew they were retiring, one, two, three, in their last four years, started using up sick leave for whatever reason. All I'm showing you is the data, you can figure out why.
We know why.
Any questions about how this is?
I hope you're gonna say we need to increase their terminal life.
We are, yeah.
Okay, good.
Alright, so here, here's what we're recommending, under consideration right now, we work with Farrell, so we're, we're not there yet financially. We're recommending raising it from twenty-eight dollars a day to thirty dollars a day, or fifteen percent of the employees per diem, whichever is greater. Everyone would benefit from that. This thirty dollars a day would cover fifty or more percent for anyone who made less than two hundred dollars a day. So there, even, everybody's benefiting. The total increase that we estimated, if we did it in sixteen, seventeen, close to forty thou, four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Now, that does not factor in any savings with, with subs, exactly, yes, sir?
So, to really think two dollars a day.
But it's not, but Joel, it's not two dollars a day, it's two dollars a day or fifteen percent of a per diem, so for some of our.
Oh, fifty percent, right.
What is their per diem?
What, what, per diem means they're daily, so, the bottom line is that two hundred dollars a day equates to trying to, about forty-one thousand.
What is their per diem?
Their daily rate of pay.
All our teachers, even starting teachers, are gonna get fifteen percent of their, of their, yes, of their daily pay.
Daily pay. Their daily pay, that's different to me than per diem.
Got it, got it.
Now, what I'm saying is, so we're thinking with the fifteen percent, if, if, yes, we're only raising it two dollars, but, but those folks that are making less than two hundred, two hundred dollars a day are getting more than fifteen percent of their per diem, of their daily rate.
How do we compare to the region as far as what we pay out for sick leave?
It's, it's all over the place. Uh, I know the Chesapeake actually was at sixty bucks a day, but there's, there's all kinda different.
Scenarios.
Yes, all kind.
Alright, so if it's forty-three thousand dollars is how much we pay a new teacher, divided by, am I right, a hundred and ninety contract days?
We, we pay them.
Two, two hundred.
Two hundred and twenty-six dollars a day, so you take that times fifteen percent, that's only thirty-four dollars.
Yeah.
Correct.
Whichever is correct.
But you're not gonna get a first-year teacher.
But you, but remember that the people who are at the end of the scale are the ones who are really.
No.
That's wrong, that's moving twenty-three.
Try it, try it, it's sixty-eight, so.
So you have twenty-one days, one ninety.
So you have ninety days, yeah.
Take sixty-five thousand.
Two hundred days is their contract, oh, I'm sorry. Divided by two hundred.
And this is a starting point, folks.
Times fifteen percent, forty-five dollars a day, if you're making sixty grand.
It's a starting point, yes, sir.
Suggests that if you're gonna market it, you don't say thirty dollars a day, say fifteen percent of your, you know.
Right, don't say that.
If you wanna put an asterisk in it, in a little font at the bottom, say a minimum, minimum of thirty dollars.
Alright.
Give an example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. Cause if you market it that way, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna do it like we, like we interpreted it as, hey, that's two dollars, I'm not gonna.
Our goal is to try to get something going to, to see if we can make it change, make those ones.
Well, forty-five is a heck of a lot better than twenty-eight, so.
We'll look at the data and see if it does change.
Yes.
I'll bring it back, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and I'll suggest we double or triple it if you're okay with that.
At the, at the top of, at the top of our scale, it's over fifty dollars per day, at the top of our scale.
Right, and see, most of our teachers, none of our teachers are gonna retire at forty thousand, I mean, that's, yeah.
Right.
Oh, that's an interesting concept.
Okay, y'all, you get that?
Yeah.
Alright, donation of leave comparison, alright. Right now, what we have, Virginia Beach allows two days, ultimately two days, it's the hourly equivalent of two days, sixteen hours. Everybody else is doing right around five days for donation of leave.
Oh, okay, they can donate it to the.
Yeah, to, and we're gonna, I'm gonna get into that for you. Um, so what we're, what we're gonna do is we're gonna increase the, wait a minute.
Yeah, divide.
Yeah, we're talking about increasing it to five, to five days, right.
Instead of two days, really, it's a five days.
Which would be?
Sorry.
Yeah, instead of two days, we're gonna, the hourly equivalent of five, somebody's a half-time employee, they could, yeah. Now, this piece here is why we're talking about the hybrids before. After the first year of employment and until they reach five years of employment, hybrid employees would be limited to twenty-four days to get donated. Plan One and Plan Two people are limited as it been, you could donate sixty days to Plan One or Plan Two. They could accept sixty days of donation. The hybrid employees were limiting to twenty-four days because, remember, they get sixty percent of their salary free, no burning up leave, that's forty percent of the sixty. Am I right?
That makes sense.
Those twenty-four days would get them to a hundred percent of their pay.
Understood.
Yeah, for sixty days.
But the regular employees have to go a period of time without pay before a sick bank kicks in?
No, you're, you're talking sick bank, I'm talking about donation.
Donation, I beg your pardon.
Wait till I get sick leave bank, yes.
And that's a total number of people, not just one.
Yes, correct. But we're allowing, instead of limiting you to donate two days, now you can donate five days.
Okay.
To, so we're allowing people to, to help each other out a little bit more than limiting that. And it's not mandatory. Okay, now, hybrid employees with five or more years of service are not gonna be eligible if it's their own personal illness, alright? Because they get, they're, they have availability of a hundred percent free and clear. Remember I was telling you that there's, there's give and take here?
Yes.
Well, so, we're talking, we're taking it away, and you're not gonna be getting donated leave because they're getting free, uh, up to a hundred percent free.
Define own personal illness.
It's for them, not their child. If it's for their child, if, if I'm, my child is sick at home, I could accept, what is it, twenty days?
Up to twenty-four?
I think it's, it's twenty, twenty days. And so, the hybrid employees still can get donated days for a sick child or.
Or a sick husband.
Or a sick husband.
Just not themselves.
Okay, I get it, I get it.
Cause they're not drawing short-term disability if their child's sick.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna forget, I still have kind of a question on the previous slide.
On the previous slide, okay.
Um, is that, is that?
Get in here?
Oh, no, one more. Um, right here, so is this, um, if someone quits or if they, or?
No, no, they gotta retire under V R S.
They have to retire, okay. Have you thought about an incentive that would give them more pay per day if they have a larger number of sick days at the end? To give them an incentive to not use those sick days, therefore the cost of substitutes?
Well, not, not yet, I mean, what we're trying to do is phase in a change. Remember, I mentioned twenty-eight dollars a day hasn't changed in over twenty years. Right now, if we could at least get something new in the books, see how it affects the plan with the data, and yes. I mean, we, we talked about all that, but right now we're trying to keep it clean and roll it out. So that's something to consider in the future, for sure.
Alright, thank you.
I made a cone on you for that next year if the data doesn't go up. Alright, so I already talked about the, let's see, talked about, I did all this, right?
He did, he did.
I, okay, remember they're not eligible after, because they get a hundred percent, okay, this, uh. Oh, this one, we've had calls from employees in the past, my wife, my husband, whatever. Bottom line is if they have the days on the books, and I, we've seen this in another division, I think Stafford's doing it. For a spouse or a family member, you could donate the max, which is sixty days. And if the, if the employee's a hybrid employee, the max is gonna be twenty-four days.
Oh, who are also, okay.
Yeah, okay?
Right.
In January one. You have a kid that works in the division, you can donate sick leave to them.
Yeah, and that, a parent could help the kid out, yeah. Okay, here, here is what we are currently operating under with banks. I can explain to you why that is, over the years, different groups agreed and had input and et cetera. But look at this, the number of banks, Portsmouth doesn't have any sick leave bank, and the criteria. Days given to join, two, 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 one, waiting period in Virginia Beach, not only do we have six banks, but some banks, you can't join until after a year, other banks, you can join immediately. Uh, coverage begins after fifty days, twenty, thirty. Eligible to use the bank, you get to exhaust, you have to exhaust all but, again, mostly three, six days. And then the maximum usage varies. It's a nightmare, and I just want you to understand what currently is, but we have some recommendations, and there are some issues there too. Okay, the current banks are decreasing in membership, and quite honestly, they've been decreasing in memberships over the years, even before the hybrid plan came up. Uh, but that, even, the hybrid now is going to, um, the hybrid is going to start affecting the banks even. Uh, but that, even, the hybrid now is going to, um, the hybrid is going to start affecting the banks even more.
Yeah, I think so.
Right now, according to regulation, we have two banks, uh you're supposed to have at least thirty-three percent membership of the given group, uh and we have two banks, the actual word in the regulation is demolished, but we're supposed to disband the the bank, and we have two others, so really, four of the six banks as they are now are like ready to, we'd have to come out, then those employees would be out without a bank. Uh, the reason being, people, uh, I talked to our person who monitors this in HR, she says, a lot of people join in the beginning, but then as they get reassessed and they have to donate more days, they drop out, and the less folks that are in a bank, the more it's getting assessed, and we're we're running into a vicious cycle there. So, as I just explained, it's unsustainable for the long term, here's what we're, here's what we're talking to do, we're talking about transitioning to one bank, uh make the rules understandable for not only us in HR, uh but for the employee groups, it's really, and and it makes it fair too, uh for people to understand. Now, this is an important bullet, because having a sick leave bank, as as Mr. Edwards said, you know, more and more people coming in as hybrid and the long term with the ninety cap, as time goes on, there's there's gonna be more of an issue with the bank, but this is gonna sustain us for probably many years, actually. After one year of employment, hybrid employees are eligible for benefits in the VLDP, the short-term disability. Remember, after the first year, it's zero, they they have no short-term disability, so what we're recommending is allowing them to join and be a part of the sick leave, sick leave bank for their first year to cover them. After that, they're no longer eligible for membership in the sick leave bank, that's gonna be a question you probably get asked, why can't, I'm a, I'm a a hybrid employee, they might not even know they're they're not letting me join the sick leave bank, why not? Because you're eligible for the short-term disability plan that plan one and plan two VRS people are. You get that?
Yes.
Okay.
And because they are, they get a hundred percent of their.
Well, the bank went out with. Well, they start with sixty, yeah.
Sixty. So that we explain that.
And then it goes to eighty and a hundred, and yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay, let's see. Doing, oh no, my fingers getting sweaty.
Warping pretty nice, didn't happen.
Okay, no. I need more than that. Okay, so this the same slide I showed you a few minutes ago, but we changed down here, this is what we're, we shared this with senior staff, it it seems to make sense, and so here's the plan that we're talking about rolling out, January one, one bank, two days donated for plan one and two members, and hybrid employees donate one day, we're differentiating that because they're only gonna be allowed to be in it one year. You know, we're not, so we're trying to incentivize them to cover yourself for one year, alright, and and then it's it's more balanced, thirty days, coverage begins,
To join.
Yeah.
You gotta burp, burp, I shouldn't say that, you have to use thirty days, so it incentivizes people to to save their leave. You you're gonna hang on to three days of your own, and then for forty-five days, so any questions?
So you have to go six weeks.
Pardon me?
The the coverage begins, so you have to go six weeks without pay before the sick bank leaves.
Right, the people could donate days to you for that, to get into this.
Unfortunately, you can get donated leave.
Okay.
Like you could donate, you could get all thirty days donated, yeah.
You can get donated days. Yeah.
Yeah, if it's the reveal.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if you get people to do that.
And remember, we're talking about raise, remember to give and take, we're we're allowing people to donate five days instead of two, so we're trying to get people to take care of each other a little bit.
Well, who's at the end?
Any, any questions about this? Okay. Uh, okay, this one here, um, leave for long-term illness or injury leave, I'm starting to, starting to all come together here. Um, these are, what what we're doing here is we're taking long-term illness, long-term illness kicked in after you exhausted, am I, am I right? Okay, the current practice, and I, before I show you what we wanna do, the current practice for long-term illness leave is if I have, uh, two years of sick leave, I, I'm home sick for two years with a doctor's note, and then, so that's, let me, let me just show you this, currently, oh, stop. There, two years of my own sick leave, alright? Now, the way the regulation is currently written is after I exhaust all my leave, my sick leave, I could have one year of long-term illness without pay, but we're still holding a job three, and you can actually apply for a second year, and this is rare, but it happens, so we held a position so we don't overstaff and hire, you know, hire somebody full-time, and then the person comes back, and now we have two people for one position. Right now, as it is, you can have somebody, uh, out for four years and we're holding a position. Yeah, so, um. Good? Okay.
Oh, you're tired.
I'm definitely going down there. So what we did is, the the, uh, long-term illness leave, uh, in in, or injury leave, we're talking about changing the name to long-term illness or injury of an employee or a family member, we're merging, you remember on the first slide, we're merging the two, the two, uh, regs together, we're not, at that point, we're not cutting anything, but we're trying to say, once for the employee, once for the family member. What we are talking about doing is rather than potentially holding a position for four years, we're talking about limiting long-term leave to twelve months in most cases. Now, we say most cases because if somebody has, uh, we don't want people to just save twelve months of sick leave, we want to incentivize them, so if they have leave on the books, we'll let them use their sick leave that they saved instead of using, and and then after that, they they'd be off the long-term illness. If somebody had no leave, after twelve months, they either come back or we would separate employment, so that's still a year. Um, and the long-term illness clock starts the first day of absence, but we're removing the second year option, so we're we're trying to, again, the balance piece of what's good for the students, the the schools, the division, uh, rather than holding a position, uh, you know, in in a hole and putting substitutes in there, cause the principals, uh, will have to put a sub or a temporary person, because when that person, the the person that's out comes back, you know, two and a half years later, um, it's it's, or not, if they don't come back, you know, so we we can't just do that, the other part is, this is the part where the people wanna come back and work, is it, okay.
John, is this, is, can you take long-term illness leave more than once in your career, or totally in your career?
Uh, I'm gonna share that with you right now, thanks for leading into that, yeah, well, I know you're paying attention. Okay.
We're all paying attention, whether you understand or not.
I know, or believe not, yeah. Alright, so, what we're saying is we're limiting it to twelve months, and in a rolling, uh, twelve months period, alright? So, but after you use twelve months of, or like, uh, in that period, you have to come back to work, this is, uh, same rule as FMLA,
Mm-hmm.
Family Medical Leave Act, you have to come back and work twelve fifty hours, actually, it's kinda what we're doing now for the most part.
And plenty of days is that?
Uh, twelve fifty hour, it's tw- uh, I don't know, eighty, I'm like.
Before, oh, that's a little bit of a request, yeah.
It's like a half a year.
It's a little less than part-time.
Okay.
Well, a twelve-month employee is twenty, eighty hours, so I would say that's around half a year, just approximately.
So you're saying that after twelve months, then you're not holding their job any longer?
Right.
Right.
Unless they have it built up in their sick leave.
They have sick leave, yeah, but we're not gonna, cur- as, remember as I said, somebody could take long-term illness after they exhaust all their, um.
Can they still get the the donated leave, would that be able to count to that?
To.
Let's say they had, let's say they used that leave, but somebody, they were, they get, got donated leave.
Donated leave for long-term illness, I don't believe.
No. No?
Wait, I I don't believe, it's eighty, jump in if if you know.
They they can use leave donations or sick leave bank, all that would count towards the twelve months, so it's twelve months total
Okay.
with all of your leave and all the donations and.
But not beyond the twelve months, we're not gonna let them donate leave beyond, but again, we're trying to incentivize people to save their leave.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, alright.
So, like, if you terminate the job, there's no guarantee when they're ready to come back that you will offer them a job, that the job is secure?
Right, correct, after twelve months.
Correct, that's just twelve months.
They they're not. Right, but, so, the recovery takes fourteen months, can they still come back and be guaranteed a job, maybe not they, the one they have, but.
No, no, but what could, because if we're guaranteeing a job, that means we're holding a a F, a full-time position somewhere in case this person comes back. We're trying to be able to hire new people quicker, we're trying to be able to keep the schools staffed with full-time people that are under contract.
Right. Mm-hmm.
So, again, the balancing piece, remember, it's not all, there are some pieces we're trying to tighten up on too, and this is one of them.
Well, I I was thinking like the next cycle, I wasn't thinking of that, holding their job, but.
Well, we would do it, if, you know, if the person came back, we'd, a pre-employee, a previously employee, we'd do everything possible to hire them back.
They could reapply.
Rehire.
Yeah.
Rehire, I mean, yeah, okay.
Yeah, 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 it's not like, see, and we're not, you know, I mean, they they would probably have a better.
Right, right, right. Damage goods, we're just anymore.
Okay, this one, this one.
You got it.
So, may I?
Bad chance.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, cancer's all around us, so does this accommodate most of our teachers who get a cancer diagnosis, who just?
Uh, it would accommodate anybody that had medical, uh, they've had medical, uh, documentation to be out.
But I'm saying, is it enough time for most of our teachers with cancer before they're physically strong enough to come back, some may need it.
I don't, it depends, I I, I mean.
You can't, uh, respectfully, you can't pick, I mean, heart disease, all kinds of, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't know how you would say one illness over and over, it's going to persist.
So.
Well, I'm just using that as an example on how realistic the twelve months is, um, I mean, I can give you a laundry list of thirty friends younger than me who've had cancer.
Example, yeah.
Sure, and and the question is.
And so, I'm, 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 I'm two years to recover.
We're talking about holding a position for an employee for a whole year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And I mean, that doesn't happen everywhere.
Well, it says twelve months, so, yeah.
Yeah. The the new policy would be that one.
It's an automobile accident.
It's, yeah, yeah, I could, yeah, I didn't say.
Yeah, I mean.
And, if they save up their sick leave, we're gonna allow them to use their sick leave, so.
So it's in. And again, he's saying also that when they're healthy enough to come back, we'll do everything we can to make sure they have the position.
Right.
No, it doesn't say that.
And that, that, that extra sick leave can be used in addition to the twelve months, it doesn't have to be part of the twelve months.
He said that. Your question, that's what I'm saying.
Wait a minute, I'm getting, I'm uh.
I'm sorry.
Uh, well, I'm not sure, I think I lost in the, go ahead, trinis.
So, trinis, trinis.
That additional, uh, sick leave that they have saved up will be in addition to the twelve months, it's not used in the twelve months like the sick leave.
It. Yeah, no, it, well, if they have a year and a half left at sick leave, they'll get twelve months at pay, and then six months, we'll let them stay, cause they saved their sick leave.
No.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So the incentive is, once people understand this is, we're trying to incite, incentivize them not to burn up, that becomes their own short-term disability plan for them.
True.
Save some, save some.
Mm-hmm.
That contributes to that long-term percentage. Are you saying then hold that position if they're qualified for that, you're still not holding their position for eighteen months, they're just holding their.
We, we do, we do, what we do is we put a long-term sub in, we do everything we can to try to accommodate, but we can't overstaff, you know, and 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 the the lucky thing is that we're a pretty big division, so we, I would work with Mr. Platt and his staffing people and the principal to try to accommodate, but we gotta be careful, that one year, a couple of years when we, we we sent the, some some of you remember, we, oh, why is that doing that? Why didn't it do that?
Cause it's sad, sad idol, just trigger it.
No, I think it, uh, I think there must be a timeline.
This is no sick, this is effective time now.
Time out.
It's that you're finished.
You're talking ass.
Oh. Hang on a second, sorry, folks.
Well, just in the conversation with this is that, you know, there is this part that frustrates me, I I mean, I'm trying to be, I don't want you to appear to, I don't want you to appear that I'm not compassionate for the employee who is ill and needs time off, however, I'm also thinking about the person who is serving as a substitute,
Yeah, well, most.
who is only getting paid a portion and doing a full-time job, you know, and they're not being offered benefits and everything else, and we could, yeah, and I I did that, I mean, that's how you,
Yep.
I can, I'll talk to the rest.
Yeah.
And when you're a new teacher, it's a little different, I feel like, you know, but but, yeah, so.
I don't know what happened with the system, it just shut down, but I will, I'll walk you through the rest of this, um.
Okay.
And I apologize for that.
Well, you can't help it.
Alright, so we did, we're we're actually getting close, and we're, uh. Remishes in here, isn't it?
Well, John, you said you were gonna upload this on our shirtboard anyway.
Yes, but I wanna, wanna.
No, no, I understand, but we're.
Yeah, it's gonna be, and thanks for, uh, I I did not, intentionally did not send this to you in advance, cause it's very complicated, and I didn't want you to have preconceived confusing thoughts about it until I could conceivably confuse you.
Confuse you, thank you.
Yeah, alright, we did the banks, we talked about the long-term illness injury leave, are are you all, uh, so, before it.
Yeah, we're with you.
Y'all with me, but I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a balance, cause either we hold position forever, or, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, understand, yeah.
Okay. Alright, the next piece is parental leave, now parental leave, here here's another one, if, uh, someone's gonna go out and have a a baby or a child rearing, um.
Or adopted.
Or adopts, thank you. Prior to Family Medical Leave Act, the Virginia Beach schools and many divisions had parental leave, right now, Chesapeake doesn't have it, Hampton doesn't have it, Newport News only has it for adopting, uh, Norfolk doesn't have it, Portsmouth doesn't have it, Suffolk, uh, it's, I'm not sure what they have, it's, uh.
Anyway.
We have parental leave, York County doesn't have it, alright, so, what what parental leave is, if, uh, my wife is gonna, she's teaching and she's gonna have a baby, when I did employee relations, you're out for six weeks, you get a doctor's note, and if there's complications, you get a doctor's note and you can stay out beyond that. Or you could select parental leave, which is eighteen months, a year and a half, then you come back to the first available of which you're qualified for. Alright, so, all the other divisions don't have anymore, I don't know if you did away with it recently, but they don't have it, and I I I believe the reason being, under FMLA, uh, it's covered under the, uh, twelve weeks that you're able to be out, and it's twelve weeks for FMLA, now,
Twelve weeks?
The first six weeks is with pay because it's, um, that's the standard for having a child, I guess, the doctors came up with that.
Six weeks, right.
The doctor says the teacher needs to be out seven weeks medically, the remaining twelve of the twelve, whatever it is after the doctor says, okay, she's fit to return, um, is is without pay, uh, because it's not a medical condition, but they could still stay out.
After choosing.
Yes, alright, so, I'm gonna share with you in case anybody says, oh, Virginia Beach, you know, you guys are doing away with parental leave, first, remember, it's part of FMLA, it's not, you know, we're still allowing them twelve weeks of coverage. Based on the data, from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen, we had twenty-one employees utilize eighteen-month parental leave, twenty-one in two years.
Wow, so.
Of the twenty-one, sixteen of the employees resigned after a year, so we held the position for a year, that school had a sub in there, whatever,
After.
And then resigned.
And then they resigned, and thirteen of those sixteen were teachers. The five that actually returned to us in that two-year period, uh, was one bus driver, one office associate, two special ed assistants, and one teacher. And so, the point of it is, we are, we we believe we're covered under the FMLA, and that way, we're able to put full-time people
Yeah.
in these classrooms and kinda keep moving, the truth is, we're gonna hire them back, you know, if they, yeah, yes, um.
If they wanna come back, yeah.
So, no more eighteen-month leave for them.
Any questions about that? Okay, uh, regulate, again, these are all regulations, Regulation four forty-six point one, funeral leave, burn, not able to get this thing back up?
I did.
Well, it's, do it, just in case, yeah, I mean, the truth is, not gonna hurt, you know, unless it starts smoking or something after we're.
I'm gonna need it anyway, so.
You're gonna start, what?
She's gonna need it, it's gonna.
Oh, okay, alright, we need to check to see why that timer is set to go off.
I said you've lost your signal.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, okay, thanks, thank you for keeping me posted, um, so funeral leave, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me see if I can skip something. let me see if I can skip something. Some data for you. Uh, last fifteen, sixteen school year, we had a thousand one hundred thirty-one people utilize funeral leave. In Virginia Beach, um, if you lose a family member as defined in regulation, you could have up to three days of funeral leave. There's also a clause in there that for extenuating circumstances, that HR can allow you to have two other days. Now, again, these are three, three, not that anybody wants to use funeral leave, but it puts us, and and this is one thing, how do you determine what an extenuating circumstance is?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Everybody has different reasons, so, well, this division has been doing it for years, it's ultimately for travel out of state, trying to have some logic.
Right. Right.
What we're, what we're gonna be doing is what we picked up from other divisions. You know, and the bottom line is Hampton doesn't have any bereavement leave, Newport News none, Suffolk none, York County none.
Wow.
They allow people to use their sick leave, but we're we're very generous as a division. What we're recommending is we, um, during senior staff meeting, we identified, we saw what Norfolk is doing, and we picked up on that. We're letting the supervisor determine the three days, and then, to 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 make it very crystal clear, in the event of uh, the death of a spouse, a child, or a parent, they can also authorize up to two additional days.
So five.
So it's potentially seven then?
No, five, potentially five, but no more, does HR say, well, you weren't that close to that, we're all good, or.
Five, okay, five, okay. Supervisor meaning your principal or.
Your principal, your department head, yes, yeah.
Your department head, okay.
Can they use sick leave?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yeah, uh, 'cause everybody handles grief differently, absolutely.
Okay.
Grief differently.
So you could, if, so, if it was a brother or sister, you could utilize your sick leave.
So five days we say.
Yeah, and you still get three days.
You get, so you get bereavement leave. And then bereavement is also a categorical under illness and sick leave, and so if you go beyond the three days of bereavement and you get an additional two days authorized, and you have five, then you tap into your own leave if you need more time.
After that.
Yeah.
But you get five in bereavement upfront from the division, so that's a very generous that most school divisions don't do.
Don't offer.
But that's not.
Well, you get, you get five for a spouse, child, right, right.
Correct, three plus an additional two.
Yeah, and then they could still, if they need it, again.
Then they sick.
Well, go over the family, I mean, we're doing aunts and uncles.
No, we're not doing aunts and uncles.
You sure?
I'm positive.
Used to be in the reg.
Never were in there, sorry.
Good.
I fact that, doing it for.
He has no more aunts and uncles.
I'm recommending, and the boards, it absolutely not, aunts and uncles, I remember that discussion well, years ago.
Okay. Well, maybe I was part of that, I don't know. I one morning forgot.
Uh, but it does include grandmothers and, yeah, ex- ex- spouses, grandmothers, and it's a, where we get, and the language is similar to what's in the definition, I think, in the Virginia code somewhere, we got it from years ago, it hasn't changed.
Okay.
Okay, so funeral leave, you got the idea, three.
Right.
Or five potentially.
Or or five potentially, and we're allowing the supervisor to deal with that, we're talking about that, uh, January one also.
Should take your leave and more.
We're actually getting close, folks, so. I I I mentioned earlier about annual leave, ultimately with annual leave, the same thing I said about the uh, sick leave. When someone's out for an extended amount of time, if I was out for a year, I'm not accumulating, uh, after twelve weeks, I'm not accumulating two days of annual leave while I'm home.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so that's uh, again, January one.
Makes sense.
Uh, personal reasons leave, currently personal reasons leave, okay. Personal reasons leave, this is primarily for ten-month employees, ten-month employees.
Teachers.
Teachers, mostly teachers really, uh, TAs, yes.
TA's.
They uh, are, have been getting, um, and remember, they only get two personal reasons leave days a year,
Ten's.
and they could accumulate up to eight. They are getting the sub rate of pay when they leave the division. Twelve-month employees are getting their pay, and that's how, it it, that's how it should be, except that the ten-month employees should be getting their pay too.
Yeah.
And so, we worked with Farrell, and we're pretty sure July, uh, January one, um, that we're gonna be able to fix that too.
Okay.
Bottom line is, it's it's their, it's not sick leave payout now, now this is their actual days that they're allowed to take,
Personal days, right.
you know, on their own.
Personal reasons.
So I don't think anybody's known to argue about that.
So you, you had eight personal reasons days on the books, and you retired with that many days, you would get.
You're gonna get your full day of pay.
You get your, yes.
Wow, that's nice.
Yeah.
But only a total of eight days is all you can accumulate with your.
Right.
It's not retrograde.
No, I know, I did retire with several.
It's not gonna be retrograde.
All right, um, you know what, last one.
Saved.
I could always hope.
Academic leave, um, all we're dealing with academic leave is we're combining sabbatical leave that we've, I've never, since I've been here, I think we researched, we found one employee like years and years ago that got uh, sabbatical leave. So we're combining academically, we're saying deleting sabbatical leave, but it's still incorporated where the superintendent has the authority, this is what sabbatical leave says now, has the authority to uh, identify a need, it's gonna come up as soon as I finish. Um, has the authority to identify needed a division that we're gonna fund, help fund someone to get a degree or special area that we need with your approval. So it's not like a su- a superintendent can say, uh, I'm gonna let Mir go get his doctorate in whatever. I mean, so there's checks and balances, we're not really changing anything, um, and that's that's pretty much it. The other, last piece I had was a summary of everything, so unless.
So is that sabbatical leave, if they get that, do they have to stay in the system for, I mean, is there, is there that?
Yeah, there's some criteria in there where they have to pay back, but I'm telling you, it's, we've never,
Yeah.
it's rare, but instead of totally deleting it, we thought we would just embed it with academic leave, and should the need ever arise, it's there.
It's. It's full pay?
Uh, I think it was half pay.
Half pay.
Half pay, and there were some stipulations in there, but it's not like it.
And how many people take advantage of this every, just the, oh, no.
None.
I said one in in years like.
Just one, here's a doubt.
Oh, I thought you were trying to, I thought you were trying to differentiate between sabbatical and academic.
Even academic leave, now academic leave is without pay. Sabbatical leave is with pay, but we don't, we don't do.
Okay, we're not doing that. So academic is without pay, but the benefit is to hold their position?
Right. Yeah.
Correct, and sabbatical leave is only in there, for example, in the event that, I mean, it's never actually happened, but, I mean, so
Yeah.
I understand.
we can't hire a school psychologist, right? So what if we decided that we wanted to pay for an employee at half pay to go get your degree in school psychology?
Cause we need them.
Cause we need you.
Yeah.
We'll pay you basically half your rate to take a sabbatical and go do that, but you gotta pay for your degree. You could do something like that, you leave it on the books as a last resort if you ever needed it, but otherwise, it's never, I mean, one person in twenty years, and I certainly haven't used it.
Gotcha.
But it's there if you ever needed like a.
Academic is the benefit, just cause if they wanna go get their master's full time.
If they want to, it holds a position.
So going back to your, um, first, your first slide, so what you're saying is it's better to be a hybrid employee, but.
I'm not, I do not, I don't wanna record and say that, because there's other things.
No, 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 I mean, for, from a disability standpoint.
Oh, yeah.
The benefits are better, being hired after two thousand fourteen, but you found a way to.
Well.
We're trying to balance it out.
To balance it all out, and that's what you, that's what you said before you started, to to make it
Yes. Right.
at least have the.
Yeah, now now let me, let me share with you, because it's, if if, if, if a plan one employee gets sick
I'd rather be a.
I'd rather be a.
and has no leave, and doesn't get donated leave, they go without pay.
Right.
The hybrid employee gets, gets sixty percent even if they don't have leave.
Is gonna get paid.
For a hundred twenty-five days.
Wow.
Right.
For a hundred twenty-five days, yeah.
Wow, and that is the unfunded mandate that came from our general assembly.
That would be hard to tell.
Uh, you you'll hear more, I think as the years go on, we'll start.
One of them.
Is that because of, they changed into DRS and all that, so they get, they threw them a bone, and that was the bone they threw with that?
That was true, and.
You know. Well, and and keep in mind, not everybody goes out on short-term disability, and then when they retire, I don't wanna get into your world here, but when they retire, uh, their their uh, last five years is calculated, not their last three, and the percentage.
Difference lower.
Yeah, there there's a differential that they calculate for each year is lower than the plan, so there's.
Okay.
There's give and take for that, I know.
Yeah, there's give and take there too. Now, I could be done, and I I just need, I I could summarize everything, uh, but if you've worked.
Send it to us, send it and let us know.
Yeah, I just wanna know, there's a dollar figure, do we have a general dollar figure attached to this, the ramifications of that?
It needs to be narrowed a little.
For which one?
Yeah.
Of of.
The whole thing.
Also, also hybrid, like a the, how many people have tapped into that, do we have for the unful mandate number?
You need a sixty percent payout, Eddie, did we?
We'll have, we.
I think we got it, for for the left, just remember, told a few people.
Well, la- last year, the hybrids cost the division approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
That's just a handful of people though.
That's gonna go up.
Each year.
But that's.
So correct.
Gonna go up every year.
Yeah.
But we can add that to our list of unfunded mandates that we carry with us wherever we go, okay.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
So here's where we're gonna go, we, this is, um, again, these are regulatory, they don't really require your action. We'll send them to you, if you've got thoughts, feedback, you can get that to John, you can get that to me, you can get that to to Eddie. And then, um, otherwise, our plan is, as 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 we noted, anticipate, we're gonna make these changes beginning January first, and we'll communicate about that with the employee groups before we do that, but just wanna sort of make you aware of them, and if you have, you know, any deep heart, heartburn over any of it, you need to let us know, so we can talk about that. All right, thank you, John.
Yeah, you have it uploaded later. Okay, thank you.
It's done.
Thank you.
Here we go, there we are.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, because John, that really, that was rocket science.
Do you guys wanna pass your trash?
Thank you.
Yeah, now that the camera's off, let's go clean things up, right?
It looks like, it looks like we're busy.
I went, I went over here and I was eating my porridge.